Start. Okay, this is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August the 18th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Katrina Brown Kennedy, Women's Minister, Stone Street Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you bow your head and pray? Dear wise and loving Father, let me say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us, even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our time, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what a good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Mobile. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. For which we stand. One nation under God, in the best of circumstances, with liberty, and justice.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning. We ask that you would first turn off or silence all of your electronic devices upon the beginning of our council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state clearly for the record his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. Your subject must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. If you haven't given that notice, you won't be allowed to speak. Speakers are granted five minutes. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. To maintain decorum, we ask that there be no public outcry or confusion during the course of this meeting. In response to the national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Alabama Opens Meeting Act, we are meeting remotely as we've done previously. The public will have the ability to present comments to the council by emailing them to cityclerk@cityofmobile.org. As always, the meeting is live streamed and can be viewed through the city's website or on the council's Facebook page. Thank you for joining us and thank you for your continued interest in your city government. Madam City Clerk?
Communications from the mayor.
The mayor has no remarks. Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda?
Mr. Dave?
Mr. President, I move that the agenda be adopted and all of the items listed as COVID-19 items be held to be legitimate COVID-19 items.
Second. Been properly moved and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on September 25th and 26th on LeShure Road.
So moved.
Probably moved to the second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Madam City Clerk, I believe we have a proclamation that we were going to read.
Oh, okay. I did not know.
No, I'm sorry. Give everybody a second to pull it up.
That proclamation?
Because you're first.
It was sent by Marion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think I got it coming up. We got the message. Yeah, okay.
Is everybody ready?
Ready.
Great.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Well, the United States achieved a significant milestone 100 years ago to this date when the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution was ratified after Tennessee became the final of 36 states at the time to give approval of the amendment and...
Whereas ratification of the 13th Amendment allowed women equal right to vote in all U.S. elections and played an important role in advancing all other rights for women and...
Whereas the battle for this right was a lented and difficult one that included women and men from across the country who wrote letters, picnic protests, and some who even engaged in acts of civil disobedience and...
Whereas their efforts resulted in Congress passing the 19th Amendment on June 4th, 1919, which set up the consequential ratification of this long overdue amendment and...
Whereas the fight for the 19th Amendment should be an ever-present reminder that we all follow in the footsteps of these resolute American suffragists and...
Whereas today, women are active in local, state, and national government and are running for and holding office in unprecedented numbers and...
Now, therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, as the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution Day in Mobile and urge all our citizens to join us in celebrating its ratification and in honor of it, reaffirm our desire to strengthen democratic participation and inspire future generations to cherish and preserve this historic amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank my neighbor and the daughter of the American Revolution, Ms. Marsha Mayberry, for bringing this to my attention and for really giving us an opportunity to mark this significant day in history. Thank you.
I certainly concur with you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson?
After Father showed deference to this amendment, we have a female, Kamala Harris, who is the running mate to Democratic presidential candidate Joe Biden, how far we have gone from 1920, from not having the right to vote to vying for one of the highest positions in the United States.
We've come a long way and yet have plenty of miles to travel. I think that this is great and we want to salute the two ladies that served with us on the council, Councilwoman Besse Rich and Councilwoman Gina Gregory, and our city clerk and our assistant city clerk, who are active in the legal women voters and vigilant in that movement and glad that we were able to recognize this momentous occasion. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd also like to thank the illustrious Sorority of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, 1913, for their participation in the women's suffrage movement, history-making. Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to fix the cost of the demolition of structures at 1156 Chincopin Street, 1360 St. Meter Street, 508 Hockum Avenue, 664 Johnston Street, 458 Plum Street, and 2708 Ralston Road. And today is the public hearing to declare the structures at 1723 Bolden Street, 2410 Hart Avenue, 2831 Fairford Road, and 477 MacCarley Street, public nuisances and ordering those demolished.
I have someone here that wants to speak on the Hart Avenue address. I'll go get her.
When are we going to let Dr. Ischold speak?
Let's right after these public hearings. Really, my fault. Glad, we appreciate you being here, Dr. Ischold, or being available.
My pleasure. Y'all take care of business. Thank you for your leadership.
Yes, ma'am. If you could state for the record your name and your address.
My name is Anjali Juanita McGalpin. The address I'm talking about is 2410 Hart Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
I got the note. They looked at the property in January. They sent me a notice, June the 24th, that I had six weeks to fix the property. I've gotten somebody to look at the property for, it's like the roofing, and I got somebody to cut down the grass. It's, they said it's not that bad that it won't have to be demolished, that I can get the roof fixed. But it's going to cost me $12,000 for the whole house to be fixed. And I wasn't able to come up with that within six weeks.
Go ahead, Mr. Richardson.
Okay, this is your councilman Fred Richardson. So, how much time would you need?
At least, at least four to five months to complete the job because the house is very, the roof is damaged very bad, you know. And I have my own house that I'm fixing on, so I had to work towards getting this house fixed.
So, are you saying, though, you're not saying that you're going to wait that long? You're saying you're going to start now, but it'll probably take that long before you finish?
Yes, sir.
So, if our inspectors go by, the progress of restoring the house would be ongoing?
Yes, sir. Grass has been cut. We had some of the trees cut back off the house. And right now, I'm having to talk to the gentleman that's going to work on it, and two of his workers caught COVID-19, so it's still process.
Okay. I'm going to ask the council, when we get to this item, if for us to lay it over for six months, give hope a chance. We have knocked enough houses down. We got a family here now saying that we want to restore, I mean to restore this house. I say give them a chance. And I'm going to ask them to lay this over for six months. Y'all keep hope alive out there. Fix it up. I'm see if I can get that done for y'all.
Mr. Richardson, David Dokkenbach is on the phone also.
Come on, Dave.
Yes, and I hope you can hear me well. The six months, if the council decides to do that, would be fine. However, the city code requires that we have a resolution within 120 days of municipal enforcement sending that first letter that the person received. We have to have that completed within 120 days. So, for your consideration, if you would like to hold it over maybe 90 days, three months, let's bring it back up to the council and let's see if the property owner has a building permit and has started the repairs. And if that's the case, then we'll close. We can table it permanently at that point.
Do y'all understand what he's saying?
I'm sorry, explain it to me.
He's saying is, we laid over for 90 days, and if you all have gone down and got a building permit, and if you have started restoring the house, then we can, you all can, we come back, we let you all finish up what you're doing. You have enough time to do what you're doing. Okay. We're going to, we're going 90 days, okay?
Okay.
Thank you all for coming down.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Have a blessed day.
Have a blessed day as well.
Thank you. 90 days from today.
Yes. Is there anyone else that is ready to participate in any of the public hearings? If not, the public hearings, clump.
Essential COVID-19 items held over?
Madam City Clerk?
I'm sorry, Dr. Ischold.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Let me go first. Thank the city council for their stance on masking. It has made a difference in the COVID...
I hate to interrupt, but can you speak up, Dr. Ischold? I can't hear you.
Okay. I wanted to thank everybody for the masking ordinance that you passed previously. It has made a difference. So, are there questions that the city council would like to ask me in regards to COVID-19?
Are we doing better or worse?
Actually, the numbers, Mr. Richardson, is that we're improving on the percent positive that we had. And the numbers have gone down from 21.5% PCR positive, down to about 14 or 16%. So, that is a 25% improvement. We've had a 14-day decrease in COVID-19 transmissions. And we have relatively low daily numbers right now compared to what was going on a month ago. So, where the state of Alabama has colored Mobile County green, but there's a new color coding formula that they've used. So, that was 14 days of improvement. I think the main thing we need to do is we're doing the right things, but we need to continue to hold the course, especially with the next holiday season coming forward. We'll see what the governor says about masking. At the end of the month, the governor's order expires on the 31st. But if we continue to trend in this positive direction, I think we'll have a decrease in some of the requirements and restrictions. So, I think it's a good sign in our community with COVID-19, that the community has responded in a very positive manner. And the data reflect the increased, you know, awareness and the wearing of masks and social distancing. Hospital numbers, we have not exceeded our hospital capacity. We have ICU bed capacity. We have ventilator capacity. The number of patients at one point in time were in the hospital has decreased by about 20%. So, again, those are good numbers that we're going in the right direction.
I have a question.
Yes. Let's get Ms. Richardson then, Mr. Dave's.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And that's encouraging news about the community's willingness to, you know, adhere to masking when they can't get their six feet distance. I have a question about nursing homes and assisted livings. Those were hot beds, so to speak. Do you have any new statistics on how they're handling it and what the Health Department or the state Health Department knows about the initiatives here in Mobile?
Well, we work closely with the state, but we're actually going through and we have been helping the nursing homes test their employees. As you know, that asymptomatic spread is a significant factor. And we have been working with them on a daily basis, if not on a weekly basis, on continuing to do tests. We have a small conundrum in that the CMS and other places are not doing, you know, the preventive screening for COVID-19 as far as funding, and neither will private insurance payers. So, we're trying to overcome that right now. But the number of cases in the long-term care facilities has been decreasing, and we do not at this point have any that are, quote, critical in regards to active cases. There are about 30-something long-term care facilities in Mobile County. We do have disease at some of the facilities, but not at all of them. So, some have really done a real good job of separating and testing. But we need to continue testing on a periodic basis of the employees.
Right. And all of these facilities are working with you in helping to manage this, then? You don't have any outliers that don't work and, you know, try to offer what they can?
No. Well, there's some resistance at times because of cost of testing, and we're working on those particular issues. But they're not, some are very concerned if they test, they may not have employees. So, if the employee tests positive, then they won't come to work. But we're trying to educate them that that is not a healthy position to be in, that the testing and the person being out versus the spread of disease and having to take care of people in the institution is much, much more value to test the employees. And it's an educational process. Not everybody is jumping up and down every single day to do more testing. But they're working with us and are much, in much better shape than they were six weeks ago, eight weeks ago.
That's very good to hear. As far as the funding, does any of the money that came down from Washington, would that, could that be a line item used for these kind of tests that you're having trouble getting that funded through Montgomery, in other words?
Yeah, that's the CARES Act money. And money, as my understanding, for CARES did not come directly to Mobile County. It came to Mobile County Commission and the City of Mobile. And they have, you know, direct funding dollars. We have to pay for things and then file for reimbursement. And we, as you know, when you file, hopefully, they're not more people filing than there are dollars or agencies or dollars available to reimburse. We're working with those federal dollars as we can. Some of the CARES dollars have been, by the governor's office, put in to testing of students going back to college. So, there is some competition for testing dollars. We think the long-term care facilities are still very important, and we're continuing to work on that. And then some of the laboratories are able to file directly. So, some of the labs have been doing the test for us. But testing has gotten, numbers of tests have gone down, and then it's gotten slower to get test results. So, that's still something we have to work through. There's some supply side issues. And we've talked, I've personally talked to the chief medical officer for a major manufacturer of testing equipment and their whole team. And they said it's just worldwide, demand is up for the product.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dave's?
My questions have been answered. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ischold, for being with us today.
My pleasure. Thank y'all for your leadership and really thank y'all for, you know, making the hard decision six weeks ago. It has made a difference. And as far as the county health department and the health of the community, thank you.
Dr. Ischold?
Ms. Gregory?
Hi, Dr. Ischold. Do you have any indication at this point what the governor may do? With the numbers going down, do you have any feel for, or maybe somebody has talked about whether she will continue the mask order at this point?
I do not know. I have to say I've not spoken to Dr. Harris this week. And last week, Dr. Harris's indication was we will have to look at the data as things go along. And so, I think they're being very realistic in looking at the data and are going to make a decision based on real information, the best they have at the time. So, I cannot tell you, but I really think that hopefully people have learned that this is a good thing to do. And regardless of what the governor says, I hope everybody will continue to be, practice safe behavior.
Well, I know with the Labor Day holiday coming up, and then, of course, schools going back in, and people are tending to gather a little bit more, the fear was that the numbers would start going up.
Yeah. And I think we've done a real, this is just a Burt opinion. I think we've done a real good job of taking care of our kids. And as we go back into school, we know that socialization, the young kids usually do what their tolls. So, the teacher says, sit in your chair and do what you're doing. I think as we move into adolescence and to high school, then social interactions are going to be more of a problem. And we really do not have a lot of experience. Right now, the younger people, it was the older people getting COVID-19, is now 25, I think, 50 years of age, have represented the largest segment of the population that are getting COVID right now. The young people are actually having good outcomes. There is an association of a cardiomyopathy that we, was reported in the Journal of American Medical Association Cardiology Division, that looked at young people who were hospitalized and about, if they end up hospitalized, then a large percentage of them end up having some inflammatory reaction around the heart. So, that's a concern that we've talked about with athletes who end up with COVID-19, and just being cautious before they return to the athletic field. So, we just, we're going to learn a lot about COVID and younger people because there is going to be an increased transmission rate in that population. But the outcomes and the data we have right now is the young people have, you know, good responses. And the hospitalization rates are relatively low for that population. And the mortality rate is very low for that group. And the group that really has, for as far as really bad outcomes, are those who have underlying health conditions. And one is obesity. So, as you ever see the Robert Wood Johnson Annual Survey of the state of Alabama, we have a problem with consuming too much food or not doing enough exercise or both. So, that makes a lot of people, 30% of the population, at risk for having a complication if they get COVID. There have been some young people. I heard a story of one 38, 39-year-old individual, married, no real underlying health problems, and father of two children who died of COVID. So, it does have a very negative impact on some families. So, I think caution and prevention are still the best things we can do for COVID-19. There will be a vaccine. Is it going to be a one injection vaccine? Is it going to be a two-injection vaccine? Is it going to be a two injection vaccine? Um, how long will uh, you have immunity if you have a clinical case? Or if you get vaccinated, we just don't know.
Uh, Mr. Davis? No? Let, let me ask you, Dr. Ischold, at this juncture, you know, we're approximately five to six months in. And I think I have a pretty good understanding of what was uh, being put in place at the earlier and mid-part of this pandemic. But at this, at this point, uh, how is the health department uh, working to uh, prevent the, the further spread of this disease?
Well, we're, we're really focusing on, on uh, one is it, it's hard to, to um, answer your question. We're, we're tracking, uh, we're having concentrated public information. We're going to uh, you know, facilities. Uh, we're doing testing at all eight of our locations around the county. And so I think um, we are, we are very active with the, the health partners being hospitals, uh, the Franklin Primary Healthcare Center, uh, Mostella Healthcare Center uh, in um, in trying to educate people as much as we can. There is no real treatment uh, specifically for COVID-19 like for penicillin, like for strep throat, penicillin. Is that we can only do good uh, supportive care. So I think uh, I think everybody's working real hard. And I think uh, it's really about getting good information out. Some people say now that they had COVID-19, uh, they, they can't get it again. This is not like mumps, measles, and chickenpox uh, that uh, you know, get it and you have immunity. We just don't know about, again, what's going to happen. And the CDC has recommended that if you test positive for COVID-19, that you do not, repeat, do not get another COVID-19 test for ninety days. They just came out last week and said if it's been more than ninety days and you have symptoms of COVID-19, they want you, want us to test them again. Uh, there have not been any reported cases of people getting uh, re-infected with COVID-19. But uh, they obviously think that is still a possibility. So we just, we, we don't know. And I think really, I think the main thing we have to do as a community is, is encourage young and old uh, not to get infected. And the problem with the young is asymptomatic spreaders is they go up and hug grandmother or grandfather and potentially uh, give them COVID-19. And then there's a bad outcome.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President, if you get a chance. All right. I'm going to. You're muted.
You're muted.
Pardon me. I, I just have a couple of more questions, probably one for uh, Dr. Ischold. And then I'm going to come right to you, Mr. Williams. Uh, at, at this point, you know, I know we've, we've got satellite, you know, Franklin, that Mostella, we've got uh, the private uh, you know, walk-in medical clinics, urgent care type facilities that are providing testing. I know the city has had a couple of sites or has a couple of sites. Uh, at, at this point, how many people have, have you all there at the health department had an opportunity to test?
Uh, I can't tell you the exact number. It uh, it, but uh, we have uh, capacity for anybody who wants to be tested. So um, uh, I could find out. I mean, every day at eight different sites, we're doing tests. I can tell you countywide, uh, we were upwards of uh, several thousand uh, tests, about five thousand in a week. And I think this last week, we were down to about fourteen hundred tests in the entire county. But we, we think part of that issue is that there are new machines that have come out that are called point-of-care testing devices. The big laboratories have automatic link into the data system. And we have concerns that the point-of-care machines may not be entering their data. We know that the case numbers are going down uh, because we look at the emergency room visits on a daily basis and the number of patients that are in the hospital with COVID-19 on a daily, day basis. So the, the trend is going down. But we, we, as we're getting more of these uh, spot tests uh, available, we have to educate the providers that the data needs to come into our system. And we correlate, we correlate our data with we know good reporting laboratories in the county. So we, we call them on a regular basis and make sure what their trends are correlate with what we're seeing.
So, so this new saliva-based test that we've been hearing about on the news, is that available here now?
Yeah, we do not do that test. We're doing the PCR, which is the diagnostic test. And I think there's still uh, there, I don't think anybody's doing the saliva test here. Uh, and, but uh, that's probably uh, evolving as we go along. So the, the tests that people are doing now that seems to be uh, accepted by the community is actually you take the swab, uh, they give you a swab and you put it in your nose and move it around. And uh, and, and then give it to the uh, the technician who then puts it in the proper tube for it to be, have a laboratory analysis. And some of the places are giving results back in fifteen or twenty minutes.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, just um, again, thanks, Doc. Appreciate you being here. Um, is um, I heard you say ninety days. And I'm going to ask a couple of questions and I'll be quiet there. Um, ninety-day wait, some employers are requiring that, that employees find at least one negative and if not two negatives before they're able to re- return to work.
Right.
You also advising that that not be the case? And that, and that maybe um, it's a, surely not going to stay away from work for ninety days? Are you?
No, no, no.
Where does that, where do your recommendation, recommendation lie there?
Well, the, the employers uh, can set their standards. We've communicated with the Chamber of Commerce uh, with the new CDC guidelines. And the CDC guidelines, if you have test positive uh, for COVID-19 or you have symptoms and then test positive, that you isolate or quarantine for ten days. Uh, and you have to be at least twenty-four hours of not having fever chills and, and taking Tylenol or any uh, any medication. So, and then you can go back and you will not spread the virus. If you're a close contact, which means that you have been within six feet of somebody for uh, a total of fifteen minutes, that's a cumulative fifteen minutes, at the time when they test positive or they have symptoms of COVID-19, uh, that you have fourteen days that you are in self-quarantine. And it's no testing to get you out of quarantine. So once you meet the criteria for the days of isolation, uh, you need to go ahead and just do the time uh, and separate. And those are, those are the guidelines that they're pushing out from the workforce. Um, for some doctors, they sit down and send a note back and said, person can return to work there in compliance with the CDC guidelines. Uh, and that's uh, been accepted by uh, employers. Um, um, and, and again, the CDC changed. The most important thing everybody needs to remember is when this first started, we didn't know about asymptomatic spread. And that's why the masking became such an issue uh, and why it just kept spreading. And we thought everybody was doing the right thing. We thought you had to have fever chills, cough uh, and have some signs or symptom of infection. But we know that's not true. So those, that's the CDC guidelines that maintains the capacity. But if you test positive, you wait ninety days before you get another test. And that's what the CDC is uh, says is the, the standard here.
I don't know about the rest, but I'm, I'm certain they would. I, I'd like to have a list of, of, of every test site and their hours and their contact, their procedure to get, surely somebody's got that. And where insurance is accepted.
Right.
And that's not always the case.
No, I think if you go to the ADPH website, Alabama Department of Public Health, they have county by county, all the different sites uh, uh, and just look and see. Uh, it's, uh, last time I looked at it, I think they showed uh, pretty much the inclusive areas in Mobile County. What we may not see is every single private doctor's office uh, may or may not collect uh, on that. But the, where the laboratories are, where the big testers are, uh, is listed on that site. And uh, insurance is just something I think it varies from whether it's a private practice, whether they accept uh, you know, Tricare or whether they accept Medicare or whether, everybody accepts Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama. Uh, but now for just that screening test that you talk about, the Blue Cross Blue Shields are not paying for uh, the return-to-work COVID testing. So the, the employee uh, is going to end up having to pay that bill.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any further uh, questions of Dr. Ischold? Again, we, we appreciate your time and, and your attention and all of your energy toward this uh, fighting and eradicating this great pandemic. And appreciate you sharing a few moments of your morning with us.
Well, thank you very much and thank y'all for your leadership. And there will be a vaccine. We will get through this uh, and uh, you know, again, thank you for, for everything that y'all are doing. Have a good day.
Yes, sir. Madam City Clerk?
Okay. Essential COVID items held over. Zero eight five nine three, approved purchase order to Environmental Systems Research Institute for renewal of ARC GIs software and licenses. Twenty-one five nine four, authorized contract with Eric Sweetser, doing business with BS specialists for emergency roll-up door replacements at various city fire stations. Twenty-one five nine five, authorized contract with Emerson Roofing for public works, complex equipment maintenance, building roof repairs. Twenty-one five nine six, authorized contract with Gols LLC for Mobile Fire Rescue Department Uniform. Twenty-one five nine seven, authorized contract with Seacor Enterprises for right-of-way mowing on Knollwood Drive.
Move. Judge. Probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
Essential COVID nineteen items, zero one five nine eight through thirty-seven six one eight.
I move for suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of essential COVID nineteen items. Number zero nine six zero three and four zero dash six zero eight through thirty-seven dash six one eight. The remainder will lay over one week by council rule.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion?
So we're not taking six oh one?
We said at pre-council, we said, we added six oh one at pre-council.
Oh, yeah. Go eight six oh.
Uh, was that supposed to be instead of three? No, six oh one. So amend my motion to add six oh one, zero nine dash six oh one.
Second.
We probably moved to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero eight six oh one, approved purchase order to Gulf Coast Fitness Service for fitness equipment for the Parkway Senior Center. Zero nine six oh three, authorized budget transfer from the general fund to capital project for installing emergency backup generators at the public works facility on Hurtel Street, Hurtel Street and Gale Street. Forty four, forty six oh eight, six oh nine, six ten, are fixing the cost of demolition of structures at eleven fifty-six Chincopin Street, thirteen sixty St. Meter Street, five oh eight Hockum Avenue, six sixty-four Johnston Street, four fifty-eight Clum Street, and twenty-seven oh eight Ralston Road. And we're declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished at forty six one four, I'm sorry, um, seventeen twenty-three Bolden Street, twenty-eight thirty-one Bearford Road, four seventy-seven Macarley Street, and thirty-seven six one eight, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for El Malagro, Malargo Row on Oshel Road.
I move. Second.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President?
Essential COVID nineteen items, um, the one that is zero eight dash uh, six oh one, um, approved to purchase of Gulf Coast Fitness Services uh, for the fitness equipment for the Parkway Senior um, Center. Uh, that is a grant that has came from Representative Barbara Drummond. Uh, she's been working on this grant for approximately two years. And pretty much is where the city is going to purchase the equipment. And they will be refunded by the uh, by this grant program that uh, Ms. Barbara, excuse me, Representative Barbara Drummond had brought uh, for the senior center, the uh, salesway part uh, program down on the parkway. And again, like to thank Representative Barbara Drummond for bringing this uh, grant to seniors down there. And uh, looking to the, once this COVID is over, whether seniors start being able to use those uh, equipment that the, that's being purchased on today. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Small. And to Representative Drummond, this is a great initiative.
Forty six one five, declare the structure at twenty-four ten Hart Avenue a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Did we vote? We didn't, did we vote?
Oh, we didn't vote.
So we had the discussion.
Oh, we had this. Okay.
Probably motion second, we had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I was passed.
Forty six one five, declare the structure at twenty-four ten Hart Avenue a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to lay off for ninety days.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Uh, we have um, non-agenda items. We have Reggie Hill joining. Okay. Um, we have Mr. Hill. I'm mute, Mr. Hill. Okay. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I can't see you.
We can't see you though, Reggie. Where's your video, bro?
Uh, we didn't do, we're not doing video, uh, Mr. Williams.
All right.
I want to be uh, consistent across the board.
Hmm. Good.
Uh, all right, we, we're ready, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, um, Mr. Hill, we'll start the clock once you um, give us your name and address, home address.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Stimson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning, Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Center Street. Uh, my goal is by providing knowledge worthwhile to District Two to also unite residents from all areas that make up the city of Mobile. These efforts create and with the proper foundation sustain a high quality of life that citizens all across America will desire to mimic. Arrived today, Mr. President, to present those communications provided by our Honorable City Clerk during pre-council. I shall title my position Rules of Order, inspired by the commendable writing of locally Antioch reporter Mr. Del Alicia's article printed on their July twenty-second through twenty-eighth publication. As an introduction, I wish to extend salutations to Dr. Evertard Luzina of Bellegroup Gardens, Mr. Nitro Henderson of the city's administration. I expect much better communications from their office now. With regards to the chamber, even while virtual, I offer those same salutations to Mr. Jeremy Lamy and Mr. Johnny Morris. I've heard no resolve to the dissension that was relayed from valuable residents who serve on the Mobile Fire Rescue Department. But for the sake of safety, I hope that it's sufficient consensus for all those impacted will be reached and used as an example for the future. And lastly, I must commend probate John Doug, excuse me, probate Judge Don Davis for facilitating an undoubtedly successful primary runoff election in Mobile County. I would have mentioned this four weeks ago, uh, seeing that it has yet been publicly acknowledged, but these meetings have been a but these meetings have been a bit chaotic and disorderly lately, as we all know. How is it that our elected officials give us the stipulations of the law? And even while we comply, you still act fearfully and unjust. On June 30th, 2020, Dr. Laura Cepeda, a decorated medical professional, shared with the counselor from District Seven that no threat in relation to COVID-19 was spread unless an individual was singing or yelling loudly. Furthermore, affirming the necessity to concentrate on the immune system and natural-based remedies rather than identifying more ways to argue over face coverage. Today, through a meeting of a committee, we are considering limiting the observations of the public. First, as if oral communications to this body was a privilege instead of a right, but most importantly, as if the input of certain citizens was simply inappropriate. We, the taxpayers, and your current constituents all deserve better. On July 28th, 1868, with ratification of the Fourteenth Amendment, blacks were finally recognized as citizens in America. On July 28th, 2020, I simply want a recognition to speak before the Mobile City Council. A week later, on August 4th, many celebrated the birth of both our nation's 44th president and the United States Coast Guard, though again denied an opportunity to speak before this council. On that same day, I can celebrate once again bringing the only adolescent youth to such a meeting, the youngest at the time being in the fourth grade. The week following, on August 11th, the same day hip-hop was born 47 years prior, I wrapped my head around the idea that for the fourth consecutive week, I would have to be unlawfully removed from the council chambers. But this time without the media fanfare. Though dismayed, I gained solace knowing that those who look like me and work for the city have been chastised over promotion as well on the same day. So as we examine the true rules of order on the 100th anniversary of women being able to vote, let us no longer disregard the proven data nor the people. To the more pressing items of the day, I sent over questions regarding various agenda items. I hope that the council administration will formally respond. Kudos to the administration for adding 08600, this is equipment that we actually need and money well spent. I urge this body to approve 08-601. This is actually an effective way of combating this pandemic. Health rating this first. Thank you, Representative Drummond, for your efforts on this agenda item. I communicated with Mr. David Dogg and Bond yesterday in regards to assessing structures. I anticipate a response from him later in the week. This was also mentioned in yesterday's CIP committee meeting. As you all come to a conclusion on how to move forward with this initiative, please remember that this project was initially designed to fix drainage. As we all know, drainage still looms over our city as a danger and inconvenience, to say the least. On August 3rd, I had the privilege of being the only recognized member of the Afri-Town community to participate in the Board of Zone Adjustment meeting. I recommend that everyone go review those findings. In this pivotal moment of history, we can't afford to misuse Afri-Town only to find ourselves in a far worse predicament because we openly foster deception, manipulation, and requests for the temporary rewards agreed, when we could truly honor a legacy and people in all facets that are valuable to the international community. For months, I have been quiet about the business transactions of this area because our councilman is out of touch with the district. I'm not surprised that there has been no feedback. Nonetheless, I am hopeful that a particular officer of the city will resolve that dilemma or I will continue to press the issue. How long will we openly show that the rules of this body aptly differ to certain citizens?
What, what is the time? Madam City Clerk?
Has a minute left.
To protect political, please hold my time. We openly.
Proceed, Mr. Hill.
Of this chamber. We openly fabricate experiences of this chamber in efforts to protect political identity with greater regard than that for the matters of the people. So I encourage everyone listening to reevaluate how we treat each other before we perish as fools during these unique times. I'll be forwarding additional formal documentation regarding my opinion.
That's your time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hill.
Written response and concrete actions from this body. Thank you for yielding the floor.
Yield the floor. Yep. Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Hill. And let me, let me just state for the record that, uh, any person who attempted to sit in or engage in a meeting of the Mobile City Council while we were in the auditorium that did not have a mask on, was either asked to put a mask on or they got the very same treatment. No one was singled out and no one was treated preferentially. We wore masks when we were in the auditorium. The mayor wore a mask, the public safety director wore a mask. And to be very fair and frank with you, our previous speaker wore a mask up until he reached the mic. But any other time prior to that, he wore a mask. And so, uh, there is no preferential treatment. There is no singling out. We're all trying to make it through this pandemic until there's a vaccine available and we're able to return to some semblance of normalcy. Until then, everybody is going to have to be inconvenienced. The restaurant owners who aren't able to have 100% occupancy. The movie theater owners who are going to have to shut down their volume in order to, or out of business period. It's been an inconvenience to, to everybody. I have church on Sundays and can't hug my church members. Can't have them come up six feet towards me. That's totally abnormal. My brother works in, at Mobile County Transportation with the public school system. And someone came to his job who had been around two people who had caught the virus. And for a whole week, he had to stay in a hotel. So, and he's my source of help. So it's inconvenience everybody. But nobody, nobody who wanted to wear the mask and would come up to the mic was turned away from having their four, five minutes. Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Okay, next we have Michelle Dubose Adams. And this is regarding the proposed policy with the street closings. Hold on, she is joining now. Miss Adams? I'm, okay.
Good morning.
Miss Adams? Good morning. You have, please state your name and address and then the timer will start. You'll have four minutes and then another minute to summarize.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good morning to the mayor, council members and citizens of Mobile. My name is Michelle Dubose Adams. I reside with my family at 6008 Ridgefield Place, 36608. I come to you this morning because at this point in our history, Mobile should not be in the business of forming gated communities to divide, to divide neighbors and certainly not using public roads and resources in which to do so. I'm speaking to you this morning regarding an upcoming ordinance that has been held over and that ordinance number is 57-016. The effort to come up with a new ordinance to more easily close streets has been manufactured by those who could not get their way under the current law because there is one on our books. Because they cannot get the consent of many of their neighbors to close a street, which is currently required in the, the current law, they claim that a new law or ordinance is needed, one that is more to their advantage. A few are lobbying for an ordinance that does not require full consent of a budding or affected property owners and an ordinance that would not require street closings to come before the council for a vote. Now, of course, they argue that this is about traffic safety, but they do not plan to show any statistics that residents in these areas are any less safe than any other parts of our city. No evidence that there are more accidents, no evidence that there are more traffic stops. Those who lobby for this new ordinance simply plan to count the number of cars that travel their streets. Furthermore, I'd like to ask, is there a plan to study traffic safety in the same manner throughout our city? Or is the traffic safety only a concern in neighborhoods that can afford to buy additional traffic studies? Already, some members of the council have invited the president of Ridgefield Homeowners Association to suggest that his metrics be used to develop this ordinance. Now, I want you to ask yourself, can we not be assured that the traffic study already done by Ridgefield HOA would just nicely fit within the metrics that the president will present to the council? Those supporting a new ordinance make no secret that they desire to seek the easiest methods to closing their street with little to no regard to the consensus of those within their community nor those who neighbor theirs. Needless to say, it should be this council's utmost concern to reach the greatest consensus and manage the city's resources for the benefits of all of its citizens. I sincerely thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dubose Adams.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I would just like for Ms. Adams and the rest of those out there who may be concerned about this issue to know that, that the Public Safety Committee, that our chair, will be holding a meeting on street closures on September 18th at 2:00 PM. So, um, for all citizens who would like to voice their opinion regarding this ordinance, are welcome to come and express themselves. We're going to have a committee meeting open to the public where all issues pertaining to street closures will be aired at that particular time.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Mr. Dave's and then Ms. Rich?
Yeah, I, Mr. President, I would just like to, first of all, thank Ms. Dubose Adams for being with us today and voicing her concerns. I wanted to, if I could, take just a few minutes to step back. This process was initiated by Councilman Richardson and myself because we had had a number of requests for vacations and street closings. And the, and the current legislation having to do with the circumstances under which those closings or vacations might be granted is vague in some respects. And what we were hoping to do was tighten up the language so that, so that it, so that it was clear under what circumstances those such requests might be granted and also have a public discussion about the circumstances under which such requests might be granted. We had, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, we had, at, at that time, Councilman Richardson and I, working with the council's attorney, came up with a draft. That draft ordinance was discussed in Mr. Richardson's Public Safety Committee. It gives us a couple of weeks ago. And it became clear at that point that trying to handle both closures and vacations within the same ordinance was confusing and, and that, and that those, those two things needed to be separated into sep, into separate ordinances. The vaca, the vacations are a permanent decision because title to a portion of the vacated road is transferred from the city to someone else. Closures, closures can last as long as the council wants them to last. And, and, and so are more, I'm not, I'm not going to say they're not permanent, but they certainly have a temporary feature that vacations don't. So where we are, we're, we're still at the very, it's certainly with respect to closures, we're still at the very get-go of this dialogue. And as Councilman Richardson has indicated, there's, he's plans on having a, another meeting of the city, of the Public Safety Committee on September 8th at 2:00 PM, where we welcome public comment on either one or both of the ordinances that are, that are before us. But I certainly have said from the beginning, and I know Council Richardson, Richardson has said from the beginning, and I think the council is uniform in feeling that, that this, this, both of these ordinances are up for public discussion and considerations. We enjoy hearing from any citizens who may have an opinion one way or the other. All, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dave's, Ms. Rich?
Thank you so much. Appreciate hearing from Ms. Dubose Adams. It's certainly a big community process that we need to go through when we talk about traffic calming and traffic or street closures. And I was pleased to see the committee wanting to separate vacations as Councilman Dave's has already articulated on. I look forward to the September 8th meeting. And that's at 2:00, if I'm not mistaken, which is also a Tuesday, where hopefully there might be even a draft that people can review or the dra, or perhaps a draft will come out of that meeting. But I think we are really focused on trying to make our neighborhoods as family-friendly and also work with planning and understanding the restrictions that a street is functioning for and how it makes our communities sustainable in the future. So I look forward to a lot of discussion. There are two more people, if I'm not mistaken, according to the clerk's office, that will also talk about the upcoming meeting and also their desire to see more input, which I know we all welcome, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Any further just commentary or discussion? Well, thank you for your time, Principal Michelle Dubose Adams. She's one of our stellar principals and educational leaders, not only in this city, but across this state and country. And we applaud all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Madam City Clerk? You're on mute, Madam City Clerk?
Okay, we have one, one more person and that is.
Madam City Clerk?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. I didn't say that.
Oh, okay, so we have Mr. Chavez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Okay, should I go?
Um, we're going to ask you to state your name and address and then you'll have five minutes, you'll hear a timer after four minutes and then you'll have one minute remaining to summarize.
Okay, very good, very good.
This is also, he's also speaking on ordinance 57016.
Okay, good morning, council members. My name is Ariel Chavez. I am a property owner and resident at 5918 East Ridge Place here in Mobile. I'm here today on behalf of several property owners along East Drive and adjacent roads who do not believe the closing of the connection between Oshel Road and Airport Boulevard would be, would be a good idea. We believe it would be a substantially detrimental idea to our property values. And also, more importantly, we believe the closure not only will be the safest or the most cost-effective alternative. What's more, we believe that if this decision is not objectively or technically made, many of us believe it could generate unintended hazards to our community. I was asked to convey this message with some technical background. I am a graduate in civil engineering from South Alabama and with a traffic design concentration. I also obtained a master's in civil engineering and transportation planning and I have a professional engineering license since, since 2010 and worked in a consulting company for over eight years. For full disclosure, I now work in a different field as a small business owner. However, the basics of traffic engineering have not changed or have remained, you know, the same for many decades. The safety of a road is substantially based on the design speed and other geometric design elements. On the other hand, the number of cars traveling on any road helps determine the level of service. The level of service of congested roads such as Airport Boulevard, for example, is notably very low or at capacity. From personal visual inspections as well as those from other neighbors, the roads on East Drive and those on the Ridgefield subdivision, which connect Airport and Oshel Road, have an adequate level of service. The closure of this connecting road does not appear to be justifiable based on the criteria. And of course, you know, the objective, an objective traffic study could help make a more accurate decision. Also, I would like to mention that the segments of the road in Ridge, in the Ridgefield subdivision, which are used to connect Airport and Oshel Road, affect about 20% of the roads in the subdivision. In other words, the majority of the residents should not be affected by the true traffic. However, closing the access will not affect only those in the subdivision, but those dozens or maybe hundreds. but those dozens or maybe hundreds of residents along East, East Drive and the adjacent roads. Uh, also not to mention that there's a significant number of neighbors in the Ridgefield subdivision who oppose this potential closure as well. As concerned citizens, we trust that your committee and the city council will only adopt and implement ordinances based on technical and objective reasons, so taxpayers' money can be used wisely for the benefit of the majority of the people. If there are any safety concerns, we believe those should be addressed in the most cost-effective way to make good use of taxpayers' money. Also, we believe it's very important that all parties involved should be allowed to participate and voice their opinions and reach consensus to find the best solution. And, you know, uh, this whole issue was brought to our attention in the last couple of days, and I'm glad to hear that there will be a meeting in the next couple of weeks. Thank you for your time and your attention. I look forward to participating in the meeting as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. We appreciate you, uh, uh, signing in and expressing your sentiments and look forward to having further engagement.
Mr. President.
Mr. Daves?
Uh, Ms. Ms. Rich may be preparing to say what I'm about to say, but I just wanted to, uh, let Mr. Chavez know that there is no, uh, there's no measure currently before us to close East Drive. What, what we have been talking about are some changes to the ordinance having to do with street closures and vacations. Any, whether that, whether, whether that ordinance has changed or not, any effort to close East Drive would have to come before the council as a separate measure, and right now, that hasn't come before the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daves. Ms. Rich?
Thank you so much. Um, I would just like to tell Mr. Chavez, thank you so much and for giving your, um, expertise on this. The, um, idea that people are just learning about that, that's always a struggle for any councilperson and for the council at large. But my office has a weekly newsletter, and I urge you to sign up for it. Um, you can go on the city's website and hit City Council, and there is a link that will allow you to sign if you're so encouraged to, um, wanna be part of that weekly newsletter release, because people have to ask to be part of that. And I hope that you'll do that, and that will help you connected on what things are going on in the district. But thank you so much.
Mr. President. You're on mute, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. It would appear to some people, and based on feedback that I've received, that, uh, fifty-seven oh sixty was something placed on this agenda to, to, for us to pass without the people, um, in the concerning neighborhoods knowing what it is. And I just want all of the people, including Mrs. Chavez, to know that several weeks ago, this ordinance appeared on our agenda. Council President assigned it to the Public Safety Committee that I am the chair of. And what we discovered was that street closure and, and vacation should be separated. So at that committee, committee meeting, uh, we decided that we would go ahead on and ask our attorney to separate the two, which he has done. But we laid it over for the committee to meet. Committee met and decided on what to do. It's just coming back by routine. It's coming back, 'cause we laid it over for a certain period of time. It's now coming back. Today, we plan to table it, take it off the table, because what we're gonna do, we're gonna come back with a separate ordinance for street closure and a, and another ordinance, uh, for the street vacations. So, we're gonna have it, I'm, I'm, and I'm making, I am announcing now that we're gonna take those matters up on September the eighteenth at two o'clock. It's a month from now, so you ought to have plenty of time to organize, to get, to get your information together that you want us to know about. Uh, we're not gonna put, put none, put nothing over on anybody. I'll make sure that ain't, that it's not gonna happen, because we wanna hear from everybody.
September the eighth?
Uh-uh, no, September the eighteenth. It's September the eighteenth, when we're gonna, at two o'clock, is when we're gonna have. No.
That's a Friday, the eighteenth is.
Hold, hold on, let me see what I got.
You said the eighth at our free conference.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's September the eighth.
Thank you.
You're right, Joe. It's Sept, September the eighth. So, uh, we're announcing it far out, so you all can prepare to come and share your thoughts with us at, at that particular time. So we're not trying to put nothing over on anybody. Everybody gonna have an, an ample opportunity, uh, to state what they wanna state. But it's, it's really nothing before, we, we are just trying to establish a law pertaining to street closure. That is nothing, no one has submitted anything to us to close the street. We're not considering that, that's not before us. We are setting the rules and regulations pertaining to street closure. So when something come to us, all neighborhoods would have to abide by the same rules. We're gonna establish the rules and the law pertaining to street closure. So when and if someone file one with us, we would have the law that, right now, you know, we, we act, we, 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 we get to one neighborhood, we do one thing, do we get over here? We do something, yes, we're not doing that anymore. The same law is going to apply across this city to all neighborhoods. And when we get that in place, then when people, uh, file an application to close the street, we have something to go by. But there is no application before us to close the street, nothing before us. We're just trying to establish a law pertaining to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And thank you, Mr. Chavez. Appreciate you, your interest, uh, in this very important subject matter.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ma'am City Clerk?
Okay, um, that's all the speakers. Ms. Park did not show up. So those are all the speakers. Ordinance is held over fifty-seven zero one six. Ordinance to establish procedures and policies for the vacation or closure of any street, alley, or dedicated public right-of-way.
Move to table.
Second?
Probably moved in second in a discussion. Am not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, aye for me. I was muted.
This way.
Twenty-seven.
Jenna is muted, muted too. We can't hear you, Jenna.
Okay.
Were you and I?
Yes.
Is all your name? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Twenty-seven zero two four, ordinance to regulate food trucks.
Move to layover till September twenty-second.
Second.
Probably moved in second, discussion. Am not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-four zero, thirty-four zero two five, ordinance to amend chapter thirty-four of the city code regarding short-term lodging or rental.
Move to layover one week.
Second.
Probably moved in second, in a discussion.
Um, yes, sir, Mr. President. And just to let everybody know that we will hold a committee meeting on this, uh, this coming Friday at two o'clock. If you would like to be a part of it or have questions, concerns you would like to send to us, if, uh, you would contact the clerk's office. We'll be doing this by Zoom. So again, if you want to participate via Zoom, you'll definitely need to contact the clerk's office so that she can help you get set up. But it will be at two o'clock this coming Friday.
They need to contact us, um, by Thursday at two o'clock.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory, and thank you, Ma'am City Clerk. So we've had the discussion, uh, we, we had voting, it's time to, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced the first time, thirty-four zero two six.
The side of the council rule.
Call for public hearing. Forty-one six one nine, call for pub, public hearing to rezone property located on the south side of Tennessee Street, two hundred feet east of South Scott Street, from R two to B two, District Three, scheduled September fifteenth.
Uh, some more?
Second. Probably moved in second, in a discussion? Am not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I wanna go back briefly to item thirty-four zero two six and ask that, uh, we send that to the Administrative Services Committee, uh, with Ms. Gregory. And, uh, you can coordinate a meeting, or if you can all have it. Well, probably Friday would be a little fast, but whenever you could get back with, with the committee members and other members of the council, uh, that would be helpful.
Will do.
Any, uh, well announcements, Ms. Rich?
Uh, no, thank you.
Mr. Daves?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to, uh, remind everybody that, uh, we will have a finance committee meeting next week on August the twenty-fifth at two o'clock. Let me make sure that's right, yes, two o'clock. In order to, um, discuss the budget, uh, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget, which will be submitted to us on Thursday. I assume will be, uh, posted on the city's website soon thereafter. Uh, this is a work session between the city council and the finance director for the council to ask any questions they may have with respect to the budget. We will not take public comment, uh, on August twenty-fifth. We will take public comment at our regular meeting on Sep Tuesday, September first, which will be, will be the, uh, required public hearing on the budget. So anyone who wants to make a comment with respect to the budget can either show up at ten-thirty on, uh, September first, or of course, uh, send us an email or contact clerk's office, uh, wherever you want to do that. And then on, uh, September fifteenth, there will be another meeting of the finance committee, uh, also at two o'clock in the afternoon in order to, uh, consider the proposed regulation of food trucks in the city of Mobile. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Daves. Mr. Vice President?
Take my announcement for next week. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I'll just see everybody at one-thirty.
Ms. Gregory?
Uh, the only thing is just to remind, um, Ms. Steinfels that she will put out a release about the Administrative Services Committee meeting on Friday, and, uh, that everybody needs to contact the clerk's office by Thursday, two o'clock, if they would like to join by Zoom. Thanks.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to announce that today, uh, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting today, uh, regarding the Police Citizens Committee ordinance, uh, revising it. Public, the public is invited to, uh, participate in that meeting. We will probably be, we'll probably start shortly after two P M. Because, uh, there's a meeting at one-thirty. I was, uh, of the impression it was one, 'cause nominally. So, um, we'll be me, meeting somewhat after, uh, two, but it is today, two o'clock, uh, afterwards. Those people that, that is interested in the Police Citizens Committee ordinance, uh, come on, come on in and participate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Uh, a few months ago, Public Safety Director Barber, along with Police Chief Batiste and several members of the hierarchy of our Mobile Police Department, Attorney Attorney Wanda Remond, brought before us, uh, the case of that property located at South Broad Street and Augusta Street in downtown Mobile. And as I am participating in this council meeting, flashes across the screen that a deadly shooting occurred in that very vicinity. I have asked Attorney Chris Arledge, our council attorney, on last evening, to draft whatever is, is, is legally necessary for us to do something about that nuisance property. Uh, too many individuals' lives have been impacted. Too many individuals', uh, peace and solace at home is negatively impacted. Uh, when we made the action last year, I believe the gentleman sold it to someone else who called me and made all manner of promises about what he was gonna do. He was gonna have Superman, Inspector Gadget, and everybody else to be there at the property. He lied on every front. It's still a funk box right there in the middle of Broad Street. And if I had my way, I'd take a bulldozer to it in the next ten minutes, because the persons who are in that building are, are, are paying for squalor. They're paying for funk and filth, and it, it shouldn't be inhabitable, and it ought not be, uh, a nuisance on that part of Broad Street. We're putting all this emphasis on Broad Street, and then you have that sitting there continuing to be a dereliction to the community. And so I'm hopeful that Mr. Arledge, he's a Supreme Court-level lawyer. I'm hopeful that he's gonna have something for us to consider. I'm gonna be reaching out to our Public Safety Director and to our Police Chief, because we've given enough time to this issue. I wanted to bring it to my colleagues' attention, uh, and, uh, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward, uh, progressively in the very near future. That concludes my announcements.
Mr. Mr. President, are we, is this, is this that flop house down there on the?
The boarding house?
The boarding house.
Right.
Right. Well, anything goes.
I'm su, I'm fully supportive of taking whatever action is legally available to eliminate that place.
Yeah.
I, I sincerely appreciate the support that I can already anticipate from my colleagues and count on me to get rid of any flop houses in your district. This, this D flop house mobile, we can do it. And so, uh, that concludes my announcements. Any, any further announcements or any from the administration?
I think they're gone.
Sir?
Move to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.